I thank you for the chance to gather again in this city, Lord, to conduct the business of our city. Father, during this time, particularly during this weekend coming up, I ask for a special blessing on the families of our veterans and as we prepare to make this a special weekend, a special memory time for them. Father, we pray for all our city departments. Each person, Lord, bless them. And, Father, we thank you for the opportunity once again to be together. In Jesus' name, amen.
Good night.
Plaid ladies, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move.
Second. Motion made and seconded, that the minutes of the previous meeting be approved as submitted. In addition to the special call, is there any discussion on that motion? Ms. Marshall on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Let me, of course, Alderman White's prayer referred to our military, and I had an opportunity to be a part of a very special beginning. Our community was selected for the second, perhaps third, time as a site for Navy Week. There is a large vehicle that has simulator, a flight simulator, perhaps maybe for carrier landings, I'm not sure. I wasn't ready to board on, so to speak, but they'll be here all week. We kicked off Navy Week as a part of activities that went on and will go on through Riverfest. Again, Riverfest coming up this weekend. I think all of us are looking forward to a great weekend, the beginning of the Memorial Day weekend, and I encourage all of you to, again, as Alderman White said in her prayer, thank our members of the military, both men and women, and underline how appreciative we are of the work they do. I had a chance to visit an architect named Wally Carradine. He is a fellow that I've known for a long time, and I was over at Little Rock Airport, and his son was coming back from Annapolis, a young man that is finishing up his freshman year. And when you see the kind of quality of the youth that we have that are going over and going over to foreign lands and are part of our military, it does your heart good, but certainly, again, saddens you when those losses do occur. So remember our military. Thank you very much. And let's go to Communications. Do I have a blanket motion?
Move.
There's a second?
Second.
Any council member want any of the eight that we have pulled?
Number one, please.
Number one?
Yeah, read in its entirety.
All right, any others?
Number two and number eight.
One, two, and eight, any others? All right, three through seven is on the motion. On the motion, Ms. Marshall?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna read in its entirety, if you would, Ms. Marshall, one, two, and eight. Let's start with number one.
This is from Charlie North, President of the Northeast Lakewood Associated Neighborhoods. I think the 10-year period for permits on ECCS is longer than necessary and longer than it should be. I request that city council members please consider a shorter permit period, possibly three years. The following are my reasons for asking that you consider this. Number one, the ordinance states city council finds that in order to further understand the effect of ECCS on traffic safety, residential neighborhoods, and visual blight and light pollution, the city should allow ECCS in selected areas for a restricted period of time so that they can be studied further. This is good. Number two, the ordinance state city council finds that given the current understanding of evolving technology supporting ECCS and the legal standards that will apply to the same, no ECCS shall be permitted for a period of greater than 10 years. Number three, it would not take 10 years to determine the effect on traffic safety, residential neighborhoods, and visual blight and light pollution. If ECCS are determined to have an undesirable effect on any of these in said three years or if evolving technology becomes a problem, then the city may be stuck with the signs for many years to come. I realize the potential cost of the signs is a consideration in the proposed ordinance. However, 10 years permits should not be necessary because of the potential cost. The permits would be for signs, not the construction of a facility or major structure. If it is assumed that 10 years permits would be issued over a period of 10 years while all this is being evaluated and it is decided after 10 years to prohibit them, then it would take another 10 years to phase them out, a total of 20 years. If three years permits were issued over a period of three years while all this was being evaluated, it is decided to prohibit them. They could be phased out over three years, a total of six years. I will appreciate your consideration of this request.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, do we accept and file? Any discussion on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, number two, if you'd read it in its entirety.
This is from Joe Melton. Good afternoon. I have read the proposed draft amended amendment to ordinance number 7697, zoning ordinance to restrict the placement of new electronic change of a copy signs to certain districts within the city. I appreciate Mayor Hayes, City Attorney Jason Carter, and Alderman for taking the initiative to compile this amended ordinance. The signed regulation, I still firmly believe is workable, is a ban of electronic change of a copy signs for obvious reasons of simplicity in regulation, public safety, prevention of sign clutter, and light pollution. Among reason lesser regulation of these signs is sufficient are, number one, ECCS can easily be remotely changed once approved is gained. Number two, regulation is dependent upon citizen complaints. Number three, the city has limited code enforcement personnel. I foresee more of the chief signs with the red dot type lights springing up in the overlay district. Will we have to live with them for 10 years or longer? I would be out of town this evening at a prior commitment, so I propose careful consideration of a ban on ECCS. Otherwise, leaders in progressive cities throughout the United States have weighed their options and chose to ban such signs for very compelling reasons. If our city officials do not deem banning ECCS an option, I ask that you use your good judgment to act in the best interest for the safe driving of our citizens and overall appearance of our city. I firmly believe proper sign regulation enhances commerce. You see this in thriving communities throughout America. One proposed overlay district encompasses McCain Boulevard east and northeast Boulevard to Forest Road, section 14-107, East McCain Overlay District. The intersection at McCain and Fairway is one where trained residents such as myself who cross this intersection daily know to stop and pause some seconds before proceeding across McCain because drivers continuously speed to beat the red light on McCain. It frightens me to think a change of a copy sign designed to divert attention to it could be placed at businesses near that intersection. City Attorney Jason Carter stated consideration of safety on designated streets will be an integral part of the ordinance. I am asking that this consideration be applied to the McCain Overlay. In fact, the similar consideration should apply for the high-speed traffic existing and exiting on Landers and Warden Road. Thank you for your kind consideration, Joe Melton.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number eight, please, and I'm assuming unless otherwise directed, do you want this read by in its entirety?
Please.
All right.
Subject ordinance O-1035 ECCS. Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of council, Mayor Hayes, I would like to thank you and the City Attorney Jason Carter for your efforts to establish a focused document for legislation consideration, ordinance O-1035, addressing electronic change of a copy signs. As in the National Health Bill just passed at a minimum, we now have a document before us that can be acknowledged by all parties, and the process of its mutual understanding and refinement can now begin. Below are two concerns I have relevant to a recent amendment for a definition change of an ECCS sign definition and a specification for the Landers-Warden Road Sign Overlay District, both under the proposed ordinance O-1035 ECCS legislation to be considered this coming Monday at the city council meeting. Number one, council meeting regarding ordinance number O-1035, mayor's first four approved amendments, section one, that certain definitions found in section 2.2 of ordinance number 7697 are hereby amended as follows. Signed, change of a copy electronic, a sign whose alphabetic, pictographic, or symbolic information content can be changed or altered on a fixed surface composed of electronically illuminated or mechanically driven changeable segment, and such content is changed more frequently than once during any one or six hours, one-hour interval. What does this mean? Number one, that electronic change of a copy sign with a minimum of one-hour copy change frequency is not subject to any of the guidelines, restriction measures, being established under ordinance O-1035. Number two, that the here-to-date arguments presented to council for maintaining neighborhood sanctity safely and promoting a positive quality of life residential home status will now be null and void as applied to these one-hour non-ECCS electronic signs. Number three, that these one-hour non-ECCS electronic signs can be placed anywhere in the city of North Little Rock, over and above the ordinance O-1035, sponsor Sign Overlay District now under consideration, regardless of their negative LED lights impact on nearby residential homes. The above question for meaning needs to be addressed. I feel that the fact of limited one-hour change interval would not deter a neighborhood-based business, school, or church from positioning such an ECCS on their property, for such signs would indeed attract passing vehicle traffic, attention to their purpose, and a cost to their nearby neighbors. Number two, I am concerned regarding the current proposed ECCS sign overlay district for Landers and Warden, where imposed signs measuring eight by 10 and as high as 18 feet will be allowed as opposed to ground-mounted signs. Only is now specified for the other sign overlay district, and I see no specification that directs such signs to be positioned perpendicular to Landers and Warden as in the other proposed signs district. Thus, I will submit they will be front-facing directly to Highway 67. I feel the extra sign size and mount height consideration are aimed at attracting driver attention for vehicle traveling Highway 67, not just those on Landers and Warden. Therefore, I feel this will affect driver's attention that off that highway when trying to read these signs with specific messages in place such as lottery and Powerball tickets available here, B2 dinners for $1,995, C plasma 55-inch LED TVs for $1,999, number D, we fix computers for high-speed performances, and E, single group every Thursday to come meet new people, and on and on we go. They may be only flashing every 30 seconds, but that's immaterial to a driver when there are multiple signs teasing to be read while behind the wheel. And these be here because I've been driven on average of 65-plus miles per hour and they're posted 60 miles on. Given the multiple Highway 67 off and on ramps for this one-mile distance, and you may very well be promoting traffic accidents caused by drivers and attention to the road, all because of trying to read those teasing pole signs, specific messages with their bright red LED lights. I submit we should eliminate the pole-mounted sign consideration and go with ground-mounted signs. Bring the sign square footage back to a five-by-six, 32-square footage as established for a two-lane street district or mandatory a 48-square-footage sign, and install a maximum of six feet in height. This measure would be aimed only at the 45-mile-per-hour drivers on two-lane Landers and Warden, not those speeding on a six-lane Highway 67 with destination beyond the one-mile McCain Boulevard to the south and five-mile creek to the north. Those southbound Highway 67 drivers wanting to stop on Warden or Landers would have taken exit one, Warden Road, at Summers Avenue to be on Warden or the overhead turnaround to Landers. Anyway, those few northbound Highway 67 drivers wanting to stop on Landers or Warden would have taken exit one B at McCain. The only way to cover all of Landers Point, Highway 67 drivers, both south and northbound, would not be in a position to react to any pole signs, tees, and messages if they have not already taken the above referenced exits ahead of time and find themselves immediately available to businesses on either Warden and or Landers. Please consider the above with the hope of preventing Highway 67 from becoming known as North Little Rock's very own blood alley mile. The difference in gaining city sales tax income via pole signs versus ground-mounted signs cannot be justified against the potential for creating additional personal injury and a loss of life. Thanking you in advance for your immediate consideration, I remain sincerely Nathan W. Brandis.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, to accept and file? Any discussion on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Terry Kissinger, as we might know, is an employee of our North Little Rock Electric Department, is principally responsible for sustainability, helping us implement our energy and environment block grant system and a variety of other things, and we, by way of announcement, want to make a couple presentations. Terry, if you could come to the microphone and introduce the two or perhaps one of ours, we'll announce the other one in addition. So let me give you the microphone, and I'll come down there and want to share with one of our proud and one of our favorite corporate customers. So Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Hayes. As part of the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program, we developed numerous rebate programs. For the commercial lighting rebate, we give up to $500 rebate check for customers, businesses that change out their T-12 to T-8 or T-5 lights. And our very first rebate applicant was L'Oreal, and Kay Mueller, who is Environmental Manager with, engineer with L'Oreal, is here to accept the check.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's get over here if we can, and I'll tell you what, let me get you. Why don't we come?
Take it out.
Absolutely. Make sure. Yep, dying outside. We assure you it will not bounce, and let me. All right, there we go. We sure appreciate L'Oreal and.
I got a second, let me do it.
Oh, okay. All right. All right, why don't we let Kay hold the check now? We've done the passing.
Squeeze it just a little.
Okay. Okay. Let me just underline, I had a chance to go out, and you may want to make the comment first of all on whatever you want, okay? But I went out about a week ago, maybe 10 days ago, and there's a program called HEAL, and L'Oreal is the first partner. It's going to be in each congressional district, and L'Oreal will be in our second congressional district. It has to do with saving energy on some things similar to what L'Oreal just did with this, if not the exact same thing, along with some stimulus funding if my origin of the, explanation of the program is correct. And they were, L'Oreal was recruiting at this stage 100 of their roughly 600 employees to be a part of what is referred to as the HEAL program. HEAL is heating, energy, loan, home efficiency. Yeah, H-E-A-L, home.
Home energy affordability.
Affordable loans, yeah. Home energy affordable loan. And what the background of that program is, and I believe it's up to $3,000 or is it two?
We're doing $2,000.
$2,000. Up to $2,000, these 100 employees can access at no interest to do weatherization and energy efficiency improvements for their home, and that it is essentially assured that the energy savings, because it's a part of the home energy audit, that the energy savings will more than pay for the payroll deduction, again, no interest, to repay that amount, up to $2,000. And that then will go back into a continual revolving loan fund that will allow other people to access that same opportunity, and when they finish paying off their loan, then obviously the disposable income that they have, and they can purchase more goods and services, hopefully most of them in North Little Rock. And let me just announce that Mr. Sisson just shared with me some very good news. For the first time in 20 months, we received more sales tax. This, I guess it covered the month of March. We received that information today or last week, late last week, than we did the year before. First time in 20 months. We want L'Oreal's folks to help us carry on that beginning of what we hope is a continued tradition, but we sure appreciate the enthusiasm that that company has for being environmentally sensitive and sustainably friendly, and we appreciate you all being a partner with us, and don't spend all that $500 in one place. Thank you very much.
Mayor, before L'Oreal leaves, can we say something?
Sure.
Go ahead, you can.
I was just gonna say that last week L'Oreal painted all the ironwork at the old mill. I don't know if you're aware of that. And they, one morning I just happened to be walking past, and there were, it must have been 20 or 30 people. It looks fantastic, and please convey our thanks.
Thank you.
As well. We appreciate it. It's our word.
I'm sure there wouldn't be chagrin if I said buy Maybelline, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Not at all. And one that didn't make it, we want to announce, why don't you go ahead and talk about our neighbor?
Yes, we also do want to announce that the second commercial lighting rebate program went to Wayne Hogan over at Galaxy Furniture. If you have a chance, go next door. He has completed the retrofit of about 50% of it, and you can tell definitely where the new lighting has been. So we're, unfortunately, Wayne was not able to be here tonight, but he is also receiving a $500 rebate.
All right, well, let's give both of these companies. We have, before we go into our public hearing on comments, we have a public hearing that was requested by our council members, I believe it was Ward Four, on the Overbrook Restricted Parking District. So let me go ahead and convene.
Correct.
Excuse me?
I said that's correct, Mayor.
Okay, let me go ahead and convene that public hearing. And Alderman Height or Witcher, do you all care to introduce it before I open the mic for comments?
This request tonight for a public hearing for a parking district in Overbrook actually was born last year when Lakewood kind of started the ball rolling as to when we passed legislation with last summer, I believe it was. Time flies. Passed legislation last summer creating parking districts, and then those parking districts can choose between a couple of buffet items that they want to have the city enforce as far as parking vehicles, trailers, other type of wheeled vehicles, either commercially in the street or in any type of vehicle being parked in yards or on the side of driveways, et cetera, in front of the building line. And so tonight, Overbrook is gonna, we're gonna consider legislation tonight to approve Overbrook's request for said parking district. And that's what this public hearing is about.
With that, the microphone's open. Anyone care to come up and address the council on that issue that has signed up? And I don't know if, what number is that? 36? I don't see where anybody signed up, Alderman, to speak on that issue. So not seeing anyone who has signed the public comments signing sheet to speak about any legislation that's on the city's agenda, and this is on our agenda. I'm sorry, it's too late. We've got to do that prior to the meeting if you're gonna speak on legislation that's before. We need to continue to try to make everybody aware, but any, anyone is perfectly, we're perfectly willing to let anybody comment on legislation, but it's got to be done prior to the convening of the council. So, you know, you can speak at the, well, same thing with the end of the council. Those are what the council has established as its guideline. So I apologize if you weren't aware of that, but we needed to do that before the council convened. With that, let me go ahead and adjourn the public hearing, Alderman.
We're dealing with it now, can we go ahead and?
Call it.
Call it now?
Normally, we go ahead and call it out of order if there's, you know, some people here in the audience. Now, it doesn't make any difference to me if you all want to, you know, to do that ahead of time, or, you know, since no one was here, we just keep it in the regular order, we'll get to it, you know? It's.
I think we know how we want to vote, we can get over with real quick, Mayor.
All right, we'll just go.
I think our request has to do with the next public hearing, length of that public hearing for the sign issue, and I thought maybe since.
I mean, it's fine. I don't see any folks in the audience that are gonna adjourn after this issue's decided, but rather than debate it, Ms. Marshall, go ahead and.
There's a couple out there, Mayor.
This is an ordinance established in Overbrook Restricted Parking District, third and final reading.
Move for adoption.
Second. Any discussion?
We need to amend in, Alderman Ross requested a little bit more definite map, so I'd like to amend in the map that was presented to us this week that defines.
Here, second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency clause, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. That now gives us an area from Seminole South and from JFK to 67167, which has a parking district.
Can I say?
Congratulations, Alderman Ross.
I know that people are gonna be calling you tomorrow wanting you to get the cars out of the yard, but everyone just needs to be aware that the signs do have to be posted first. There's a lot of technical, and you need to get the word out, and they need to be notified first, too, before you start doing it. And then it's an ongoing battle.
What Alderwoman Ross is talking about is that we can't go out and start hauling off cars tomorrow, so.
We gotta put up signage and make sure everybody's aware of it.
Exactly.
Overbrook is aware of what the requirements are to activate the parking district.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Next item? Ms. Marshall? I think we're on new business. Actually, maybe not.
Old business.
No, old business. We got our fun thing here.
Old business. O-1035.
All right, please call it.
This is an ordinance, amended ordinance number 7697, zoning ordinance to restrict the placement of new electronic change of a copy signs to certain districts within the city, third and final reading.
All right, can I get a motion for adoption, and then we'll talk amendments?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, do we adopt the legislation? The floor is open for amendments.
Before we do that, can I get a clarification from our city attorney?
Absolutely.
On the legislative action that y'all conducted while I was watching y'all on TV last two weeks ago concerning some amendments? Can you explain in as few short words as possible as what those amendments, how they affect this legislation?
So you're asking me what the amendments were that we did last time? Yeah, I wanted to get this in front of us, so...
I was trying to see if I had my notes from the last meeting, and I just didn't bring them up here with me as to, you know, the exact amendment that was made last time. I have my amended version of it that's valid right now, but, you know, post amendment, but I don't know if I can identify it for you with particularity each change that we made, just off the top of my head.
And I appreciate Alderman Ross mentioning this. I thought that maybe we might take care of a few of the comments by amendment, but assuming that that may not be the case. Let me just go ahead and offer, because I see we're four people have signed up to speak on this, let's go ahead and open the floor for that. And please state your name and make your comments. Remember, three minutes is what we're asking you to keep your time to, and we look forward to your input.
Robert Fury, 7205 Pontiac Drive, Ward Four. I want to echo an item that was in the email from Joe Melton that Ms. Marshall read, and that has to do with the, a number of progressive cities don't allow any of these signs, and for good reason. I would hope that North Rock would be progressive. There is also a misconception that owners of small businesses want these bright flashing expensive signs. I lament that misconception has had legs. The owners of small businesses that I've communicated with would prefer to be, not have the expense of spending money on these signs. I just, I know that the dialogue over the last year has gone down this road towards these parking districts, and I just want to go on record that there's a lot of small businesses that do not want these signs. I'll submit that if there were a referendum of owners of small businesses, these signs would be prohibited. If there were a referendum from the voting public, I don't believe that there would be any of these signs. I think there's enough sign blight on JFK and Washington and Broadway as there is. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Microphones open.
My name's Charlie Knott. I'm president of Northeast Lakewood Associated Neighborhoods. I'd like to ask, as you try to finalize this ordinance, that you protect our neighborhoods. That's been the main request we had since the beginning of this process 14 months ago, that the enjoyment of homes and possibly property values be protected from the impact of these signs. One amendment discussed at the last council meeting was to change part of the definition of electronic changeable copy signs to exclude those that had a change frequency of one hour or more from regulation under this ordinance. We're very concerned about this. We feel this would open the door to having these signs in neighborhoods, possibly surrounded by homes. And I would submit that all ECCS should be restricted to overlay districts regardless of their change frequency. I'd also ask that there be an adequate comment period as you try to finalize this ordinance. I realize it's been a very tiring process over the past 14 months, but I think there are likely to be amendments made tonight. It appeared to me that the amendments that were discussed and made after the last council meeting somehow were not in the agenda, so very few people have had an opportunity to see them. It's a very important ordinance, and as with any other the city has passed, I think it's important that there be adequate time for interested parties to comment as you finalize it. I have comments on overlay districts proposed for McCain Boulevard from North Hills to Forester and Warden and Landers Road, from McCain to the city limits. There is a traffic report, traffic accident report by North Little Rock Traffic Services. I think you've probably all seen. It indicated that the location of Landers and McCain was the highest traffic accident rate location in the city. Warden and McCain was third, North Hills and McCain was ninth, which is still pretty high. An earlier communication mentioned a busy intersection at Fairway and McCain. I think something else that should be taken into consideration in that overlay district is the proximity of homes in Heritage Park, also the proximity of homes on Oak Tree Circle to Warden Road. It appears that...
Five seconds. Go ahead and sum up if you want, if you would.
It appears that poll signs will be omitted under the definition of interstate. Technically, 67167 is not an interstate. Last statement, I go from Summers to Warden every day, and a lot of times, there's more traffic on Warden than on 67167 with frequent stops along Restaurant Row. Thank you very much for the time, Mayor.
Nate Brandis, Ward Four. I echo the comments made by Charlie Knott, and please allow me to trim mine. I'll try to be brief, as always, ladies and gentlemen of council. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I enjoyed some field trips with six of you aldermen, where we took vehicles and looked at signs in proposed possible areas, and I thought that was really good because it allowed us, as your constituents, to be out there with you when you took a look at signs for validation as to their effect on neighborhoods. I appreciate that, as the committee under Alderman Witcher prompted. The elimination of the one hour, six to one hour, I'd recommend that you consider eliminating all verbiage after the word content, and therefore, you would eliminate any reference to frequency of content. This would encompass any LED, electronic sign from being excluded from your efforts under this ordinance to control placement thereof. With regards to form, you know, there's 27 wheresses that leads to this ordinance justifying its existence in your attempt to control this sign problem, opportunity, as you view it. 27 wheresses. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a huge endeavor that you're taking under consideration. The safety factor alone is very important, and if the information that Alderman Ross obtained from the department, the latest data being 2008, this means if you're going to evaluate these signs from a safety aspect, it'll be 2012 before we establish a baseline of information for comparison, and 2014 before you see the first results of any impact of these signs upon the business overlay districts that you've defined. So please keep that in mind. It's going to be a long time before you can actually statistically take a look at accident data as it impacts your decision. And finally, to be brief, form. Again, you've got 27 wheresses prompting the reason and justification for this legislation. I would ask for you to consider extending the moratorium for three weeks until the next council meeting of June, I believe it's the 7th, the 14th, with a holiday thrown in. There's no, really no deadline, although we've been chewing on this for, what, 15 months? Three more weeks probably wouldn't be that difficult to swallow. It would give us an opportunity, as your constituents, to take a look at what you're going to define this evening through the amendments, and allow us to chew on that, just like I'm led to believe that possibly Mayor Hayes is going to take another look at that First Amendment he prompted approval of regarding the six-hour to one-hour electronic signs being excluded. I would hope that would take place. I appreciate your time, your efforts, and thank you very much.
Got one more who signed up to speak.
My name is Fay Kirkwood. I live at 4516 Summers. I've talked to you people several times, and as you all know, safety is really high on my list. I don't know how many of you have lost someone to, even out here. If you've lost someone to drunk drivers, you joined in the Mothers Against Drunk Drivers. Now there's a nationwide push to stop texting and telephoning while you're driving. This is one more thing that detracts from your attention while you're driving. I hope we don't have to lose somebody to learn this. The frequency of the signs, if you have 10 businesses in a row and the frequency is staggered, you're getting a flashing message every two to three seconds, just dup, 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 dup. Now, during World War II, they used flashing lights as a means of torture. Is that what we want to inflict on our citizens as they're coming through our town? Is saving that $2 to go to that store worth a life? I don't think so. That's my comment on this. I would like to make one request of the council, whether it be the city clerk, or the mayor, or somebody, that a few minutes before the council meetings start, that there be a bell or something to notify people that it is their last chance to sign up, because we have people who would like to talk to you all who don't know the procedures. And I thank you for your time, and I hope you all stay safe.
Thank you, and we certainly will make an effort. Maybe we can make it a part of the procedure that the city clerk announces, you know, that when the council convenes and we begin deliberations that no further signing ups can take place, soon as the gavel is banged, convening the meeting. I think that's what our understanding is, and we certainly don't want to disenfranchise anybody. We do, probably one of the most liberal city councils in the state in terms of allowing public input, and we're very proud of that. Why don't we, those are all that have signed up. We do have it in front of us. There's a motion been made and seconded for adoption. You know, I don't know that anybody is in a rush to judgment. What I would like to ask the council to do tonight, and I fully intend to bring this to a vote along with the amendments, but I certainly would be willing to accept an amendment that continues the moratorium, and this is the council wants to. I respect the request for further time to review it, but I really very much would like for us to vote on something. I don't, again, would be very happy to have an amendment that would extend the effective date until July 1st, extend, continue the moratorium, that no signs will be issued. I could do that by executive order, and I certainly would, but certainly, again, we could extend the moratorium till July 1st. That's halfway through the year. And then, any council member would have the opportunity over the next two council meetings to come in and propose any amendments to it before it would go into effect. So that would be one way to address it. I really do believe that, you know, that after 14, 15, however many months that we've been reviewing this, that a variety of options for the public to have input, and I would like something before us that has some solidity to it that we can look at by way of amendment rather than speculation as to what might be adopted. So, you know, if that's the will of the council, I would be very willing to, you know, accept an amendment that would extend the moratorium till July 1st and have this legislation go into effect at that point. You know, we can do this now or later. It really doesn't make any difference to me, and that any council member, obviously, who would want to propose an amendment to what then is before us, would have that opportunity. So I really want to get solid in what we have to deal with, is what I hope the council will be sensitive to. So with that, we're available for amendments, and I know that there have been several that have discussed. The floor is open.
I'd be happy to make that amendment to extend the moratorium if we want to go ahead. I mean, are you wanting to do that? But I'd also like to put the amendments out so that people will know what we are amending it to, so...
Sure.
So that's my, June the 1st or June the 11th, till the next meeting?
Well, I would propose that we, it, we would, at least my feeling is that the legislation, if adopted, would not go into effect until July 1st.
Right, okay.
And that the moratorium would be extended until the effective date of the legislation, however it ends up. And then we would have, including a special meeting up to the last day of June, to propose any amendments. Two more regular council meetings and any special meetings that the council may want to call, you know, in order to address any potential amendments. But I would hope that we could vote on something that would be solid, that people would have an opportunity to amend to the extent that they amended out of existence. So, I mean, that's there. So that's what my hope is, is that we put something before us that has some consensus, and then we can address it by amendments between now and the 1st of July. If there are no amendments that are adopted, then it would go into effect whatever we might agree to tonight.
Well, my amendment's out there then, until June the 1st.
Okay, that's an amendment. Do you have that, Mr. City Attorney?
I think if you're wanting to extend the moratorium until July 1st, there's an item on our agenda, O-1041, proposing to do just that. If the council would like to call that to the table and to insert the date of July 1st, 2010, that would have the effect of extending the moratorium to that date. And then, for the pending ordinance, O-1035, it would require an amendment to the emergency clause for the effective date, would require a change to the emergency clause.
Well, you know, before, I mean, you know, I'd like for us to deal with the legislation. I would support, again, that, but I really want to deal with the legislation before we deal with the moratorium, however we want, unless we did it in one amendment, and I wouldn't mind doing it in one amendment. But I hate to, I hate to put the moratorium before we voted on anything.
Then I take my moratorium back, my amendment, and we'll wait and do it on the next one.
However you want to do it. I just, I would, I would prefer, you know, us dealing with the legislation, and then if you want to wait and do the moratorium later, I would, I would, I would support doing it in one swipe if we wanted to, but I don't want to do the moratorium before we do the legislation.
I just have a point of order question. If we deal with the legislation before we deal with the moratorium, and that allows us to, we can, we can do this every council meeting till we run out of council meetings, can't we? If we deal with the moratorium after we deal with the legislation?
Let me just say how I'm going to run this meeting.
Well, I understand. I understand. You're the captain of the ship, okay?
Unless I outvote the...
I said, I just wanted to question.
Well, I mean, the question is, you know, we may deal with the legislation, we're going to deal with amendments. Those amendments, as I indicated, could be to extend the moratorium. It may not be. If we vote for the adoption of the legislation and there's no moratorium, it goes into effect if we adopt the emergency clause. If we don't adopt the emergency clause, then it goes into effect, you know, what, when, Mr. City Attorney?
60 days.
60 days. And so, you know, there might be a period. You know, that's the way I intend to ask the council to deal with it unless overruled, and that is to deal with the legislation in any way we want to. It's on the agenda, as stated, and the moratorium is down on the list.
I just, and I beg your pardon on this, I just want to say is that it seems that every time we've gotten to the end of the moratorium, because we didn't have our ducks in a row, because we hadn't done what we said we were going to do up to that point, we've extended the moratorium. Now, here we are, considering extending the moratorium again to give everybody some more time to...
No, what we're, what we're doing, Alderman, is that if we adopt the legislation tonight, we've got something that we adopted, and we don't, you know, then we've got a gap here that covers, I could do this by executive order. I could tell our departments to not issue any signs. I could do that way if I wanted to. But what I'm suggesting, you know, is that we have legislation that if adopted, and we didn't do anything to protect that window between now and July 1st, then we might have folks that might kind of come up and do something. So, you know, we've got to extend the moratorium if we're going to postpone the effective date of the legislation so that we cover that window. That's my intent. And if you don't want to vote in that direction, then that's certainly your prerogative. Well, the legislation does contain an emergency clause.
It does, it does, and that could happen if you want to do that. If you do that, then there's no moratorium necessary. And that's why I want to deal with this first, that this council may decide that they want to adopt the legislation and they want to adopt the emergency clause, and if that's the case, then, Mr. City Attorney, I assume it goes into effect immediately.
Yes.
Okay? So that's my point. Let's deal with the legislation, and then we can deal with whatever...
Let's deal with the legislation, and then we can deal with whatever we want to in terms of protecting, you know, the community pending the actual implementation of the legislation. With that, amendments are available. Ms. Ross?
I think we've passed this around, though. It says Ross White Amendment. You received one that said Ross Amendment, but I'm going to hold both right now because I don't know if that's exactly how I want it, and that's one of the reasons that I'm glad you're holding this. But under the Ross White Amendment, I don't know if Alderman White wants to do this, but if anyone has any questions on this, I think everybody's got this, do you want me to read out these separate amendments or do it one at a time?
Let's do it one at a time.
Okay.
Assuming that you're ready to propose them.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
On the Ross White list.
That's fine, absolutely.
Now, on just the Ross list, I'm still, had a couple of questions.
You've got the floor. Just, I just want to make sure whatever you're doing is proposing amendments.
Okay, the first one is the duration of permits, and Mr. Carter, you may want to, because these were ideals that I gave you, and you came up with the amendments. I'm going to let you explain that then, just to make sure that we get this off.
The concept under duration of permits with the, the changes being proposed, as shown by double underlines on the last sentence, is to facilitate annual renewal of permits with the payment of a business license. So it's basically just to, it's an administrative process just to ease administrative burdens and make sure that signs, people who have signs are given notice of their time to renew and build appropriately. It's just an administrative.
That's basically what it is. Most all businesses have signs, and the ones that do is just incorporating it into their business license. That's so, you know, when they pay their business license, their sign fee is already, their sign permit is already paid. It's just, like I said, it's mostly administrative and to make sure that everyone's, has their permits up to date.
I'll take that as a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Alderman White? The question is that currently, is it an annual renewal?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's my thought.
But it's not followed.
Exactly.
We need to be more sensitive to the pursual of those regulations in terms of annual permits. So I know we've discussed that, and I don't think we follow it like we ought to, and, you know, this would heighten that awareness, let's put it that way. Any further discussion on this motion? Ms. Marshall?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Okay, on the second one. Oh, okay, this is one of the things, and this is an issue that came up, you know, we had several people come in, you know, when we, at the last minute, and get their sign permits when they knew that there was a possibility of being a moratorium. They've been out, their signs were turned on. We had to have code go back out there twice because their signs were flashing every two seconds. They were not up to code. They were not following the standards. And so what this would do is just require them to have a city official inspect the sign to make sure it is following code and it's, it's within code, basically is what it is. And what this does, this is a fine in the event that they turn it on and it's not inspected by a city official. Basically like a plumbing inspection, electrical inspection.
And that's your motion?
That's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Marshall?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Do you want to take over any of these, or? I don't want to hog it. Okay. Number three is the Camp Robinson Pike Remount Road Sign Overlay District. Proximity of this with Camp Robinson, I know, especially in Ward 1 up to 47th Street where Ward 1 ends on Camp Robinson, we have so many residents behind that area that we want to increase the time change on this from 30 seconds to 45 minutes.
Is it 30 seconds or is it 15?
Fifteen.
Is it 15, right. The other, the large ones, from 15 seconds to 45 minutes, just to prevent, because there's so many businesses right there. It is one of the accident, 44th and Camp Robinson is one of the top accident rate areas also there at Kroger. We've had, we have pedestrians crossing all the time there.
And the houses there that run parallel to that street at Camp Robinson Freeman Circle, those houses see the businesses. They will see those lights.
Take that as a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Any discussion?
Just a question, a clarification. Mr. Carter, how many different, with these sign overlay districts, how many different frequency of change regulations do we have distinctly different?
Right now, there's just two. This would propose a third.
This would propose a third?
As of right now, there are four different types of, you know, we categorize based on the type of road that the sign would be in the proximity of, so it's.
Basically, Camp Robinson Pike Remount is a commercial corridor, correct? Where commercial businesses are.
I think it's a principal arterial, is that?
Yeah, okay. Alderman Ross, and then Alderman Baggett.
Yes, it is to 47th Street, but when it gets into your ward in Ward 4, it's extremely residential. When you get down by the park, you've got houses all along there, all the way up to Remount. You've got houses, I mean, it's a large residential area there by the park.
Basically, is it? By way of clarification, can you tell us the three times that are permitted under this within the districts?
Of, of most signs, they're just rotated 15 seconds. Along highways and access roads that are off of the highways where the signs are more elevated and larger, they have a 30-second rate of change. This would propose a third category of a 45-minute rate of change.
So there are two rates, one's 15 and one's 30 where they're permitted, and then 30 seconds, 15 seconds and 30 seconds, and this would be a third of 45 minutes.
But none of those have residential areas in them.
Discussion? Any more discussion? The amendment is to change what's existing now, is it 15 seconds now?
Fifteen.
That's correct.
To change to 45 minutes. Discussion, I think Alderman Baggett, and then Alderman Taylor.
Well, I think we're talking about from 47th to Remount. Is that what we're talking about?
No, you're talking the whole, the whole, the whole sign district.
You're talking about the whole overlay district.
Thirty-third to Remount, or, only out further.
I'm just talking about from 47th Street to Remount Road.
No, I don't think you could.
Not, I assume that not unless, right now, this amendment would address the entire district unless there was a further amendment. So it would mean that every sign within that district would be 45 minutes instead of 15 seconds. Now, you know, you could move later to amend that and shorten the district if you chose to, but at this point, as I understand it, Mr. City Attorney and the sponsor of the amendment, that it would change every sign's rotation within that district from 15 seconds to 45 minutes. Yes, ma'am?
I just know in several, you know, all the sign meetings that we've had and everything, I know that, you know, Ward 3 is on the opposite side of Camp Robinson, and Ward 4 is also on the other side when you get past 47th Street, and, and we have discussed the residential areas. And in here, as Mr. Brandis said, in the 24th whereas, I think it was, I guess we were counting the whereses or whatever, but, you know, safety and residential areas, those were, those were large concerns.
Well, one of the things, and, and this is, you know, I know I had an opportunity to review some of your amendments, it appears to me that perhaps a better way to address this would be by shortening the size of the district rather than making the entire district subject to 45 minutes, if that's your intent.
I mean, Ward 1 would be covered then.
I mean, that would, that would be something that I would, at least, you know, and I'm not in a position to make amendments, but I would be more inclined to support shortening or reducing the size of the district than I would be changing 15 seconds to 45 minutes. But it's on, on the floor right now is, is the 15 seconds to 45 minutes. You know, further discussion?
Isn't from 47th up to Remount, it not all residential anyway?
Basically is.
I mean, it is, it's not basically.
Well, I mean, you have, you have churches, and you've got some Pizza Huts and things along there.
And there's an In-N-Out store at the Y, but.
That's.
I would, I would support reducing the size of the district. I'm afraid, I don't know that I could support this, but this is up to the council, and I may or may not get a vote. Alderman Witcher, in discussion? We're still in discussion?
Okay. From, from a business perspective, I think about a block or a block and a half beyond 47th, the bank is, that would be the last commercial establishment that I can recall off the top of my head, other than some, a garage and some other small businesses in that sector. It's about 4,900.
Where's our planning? Sean, are you out there? What's the street just past, I guess it's at Shakey's, or?
Up and down.
There's a block right past there. We're trying to maybe discuss reducing the size of a district, and we need a, you know, identifying street or.
You're doing the district in the district.
Now, we're not right on, we're on that, we're not on that right now, but I think we may very well get to that depending on what happens.
West 48th.
Depending on what happens with this. We're still in discussion on the amendment to extend from 15 seconds to 45 minutes. Alderman Ross?
And this is another thing, one that we may want to hold, Mr. Carter, there's possibly, we can split the sign district in Camp Robinson, split it, have a north and a south if you want to, but I still want to lengthen time on Camp Robinson because the accident right there, from 33rd to 47th. It doesn't have to be 45 minutes, but it needs to be longer than 15 seconds.
At this point, we're on your motion. So, you know, we're on discussion at this point. I'm, you know, amendments are available until we get.
Do we have a second on it?
Excuse me?
Do we have a second on the amendment?
On what?
On the amendment?
To, well, the amendment that we're on is extended from 15 seconds to 45 minutes, and Alderman White seconded that, so yes, there is a motion and second. So any discussion on that? The amendments are still available, no matter what. I mean, we're going to amend it until we get finished with it.
And we're talking, but we're talking about her amendment specifically.
On about her amendment. That's what we're going to vote on. Once we finish discussion, we're voting on extending it from 15 seconds in that district to 45 minutes. Any further discussion on that? Motion? Ms. Marshall on the motion to extend it from 15 seconds to 45 minutes?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Baggett?
No.
Phillips?
No.
Height?
No.
Witcher?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, have another amendment then, on the same area to amend it from 15 seconds to one minute.
Proper motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have to remember that this is a highly residential, we have not split the district right now. So if they come back and split it, but, I mean, it is one of the top accident rates. And we talked, we said it's, we're looking at safety, and we're looking at residential areas. So if you vote against it, you're totally discounting both, both of those things.
The motion and made and seconded, extend it from 15 seconds to one minute. Any discussion, any further discussion on that motion? On the motion, Ms. Marshall?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
No.
Phillips?
No.
Height?
No.
And Witcher?
No.
All right, floor is open for motions.
Okay, let's move on.
At this point, it's 15 seconds. Any further motions, and we're still open for any motions to amend.
Okay, but could we, Mayor, could we discuss the possibility of changing the district boundaries?
Absolutely.
Camp Robinson?
Absolutely.
And I'm, and I'm just, I'm asking for any discussion that Ward 3 particularly, Alderman, might have.
Sean, have you, did you get us a street that's, I think, one block past 47th? West 48th or West 50th? If you're on the west side, it's, if you're on the east side of Camp Robinson, it's West 48th. If you're on the west side of Camp Robinson, as the boundary, it would be West 50th, according to MapQuest. Okay, well, we'll, you know, we'll, at this point, unless Sean tells us otherwise, we'll believe in MapQuest. So, you know, we've got a couple of boundary lines if anybody wants to try to move to sever the, or split the district.
Okay.
Can I?
I'm sorry. All right, you know, and I'll remind you, you know, the current overlay district for that area has monument signs all the way out. And, and I think by, by making this change, I am not sure if that will affect the monument signs. Sean?
Well, at this point, at this point, there, the only thing that that would do would be to create two districts that have the same rules that are in existence now. Now, you might then be able to address that by changing within the districts, but all that if you move to sever those districts into two, all you're doing is severing them into two. The rules that apply to the larger district would still apply to both districts post adopting the severing amendment. So then you can deal with the changing them up within that, but at this point, there's nothing on the floor. So, can I ask a question and clarification? And that these electronic changeable copy sign districts that we're setting up is separate from the existing sign overlay districts, is that correct? Is that two sets of rules?
No. The, we have, the, the sign overlay districts that are being established, like particularly with the Camp Robinson one, for example, is just additional rules that are being placed on the existing district.
Okay. So if we change the boundary lines of the district, then we could affect?
Yes.
Existing signs that are in place in that district north of 48th or north of 50th Street out to the city limits?
Yes.
How far does that sign district run, Sean?
Goes from Camp Robinson Road, then all of Camp Robinson Road, Remount Road between Camp Robinson Road and Maryland, and Pike Avenue between 33rd and 34th Streets.
Primarily light industrial out once you get past where Camp Robinson goes into Camp Robinson, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. The only, the only, the only commercial establishment that I'm aware of, excuse me if I'm speaking out of turn here, is the Easy Mart at.
Remount and Camp.
Well, you've got, going up the hill, you've got a liquor store and a few other things. You've got a wholesale meat company in.
Liquor store.
Yeah.
Busy, yeah, there's some businesses up and down there.
Alderman Ross?
Now you're talking about splitting the wards, you know, you didn't care about protecting the residents in Ward 1, but now you want to split it so you can protect the residents in Ward 4. I don't understand that.
I think, I think, I think since there's already existing overlay districts, change around. But at this point, there's nothing, there's no one has proposed anything. There's just sort of some general discussion, but we're trying to work toward an amendment that anybody may want to propose. It's open, the floor is open for amendments. Alderman, excuse me, City Attorney?
Mayor, if you wanted to, I know I referred you to the later ordinance that's on our agenda for extend the moratorium, but I really don't know anything that would prohibit you if you wanted to add a section into the ordinance that is before you right now to extend the moratorium and to cause it to end on July first. That amendment could be formulated, as well as amending the emergency clause at the same time. It would render O-ten forty-one moot, but, but it could be done with this ordinance. And I want to make sure I answer that question accurately.
And that was what I was driving toward a little earlier, but I think we're trying to, you know, I mean, we don't need to do that in any certain order, but I, I, I would support something like that. Why don't we, you know, why don't we, as we talk amendments, I know there's one amendment in terms of amending that I think probably has some, some merit to it, and that is amending the size of the East McCain overlay district. I know that there, that I was aware of some discussion about shortening the length of that district and excluding McCain as it is, I believe, up to Spring Hill. And if anybody wants to make that motion, at least that may be something that we can do. Yes, ma'am? Okay.
I'll try one more time. Moving on to the East McCain sign overlay district, I'd like to amend the boundaries to Spring Hill Road to Forester Road, that, there are no residents in there, there, I mean, that's, that's strictly commercial area. I'd like to, you know, and with that being, you know, that, that amends out the area where the high, the three, two or three highest traffic accident areas are there, so I'd like to amend that sign district to, to Spring Hill Road to Forester Road.
Is there a second?
A second.
That, that's a motion made and seconded to amend the size of that overlay district by reducing its size between North Hills and changing that to Spring Hill Road and retaining Forester Road. We're in discussion?
Yes.
What's the current boundaries on the district?
Excuse me?
The current boundaries?
Current boundaries is North Hills to Forester. We're proposing, Alderman Ross is proposing to shorten that to Spring Hill Road. That shortening would take that road, and Spring Hill Road is obviously the Spring Hill exit that comes by the hospital. I know that on the south side of McCain, there are residences pretty much up to the shopping center. I think that's a good ordinance, and I would encourage the council to consider it.
Where is Forester?
Spring Hill, that Forester...
Is that near the post office?
Is the post office?
Where the railroad tracks.
Where the railroad tracks?
Where the railroad tracks.
Because you have two, two homes there, near the railroad track.
It's not at, it's not at the railroad tracks.
Excuse me?
It's well before the railroad tracks.
Forester Road, though, does not go all the way to the railroad tracks. You've got two residents in...
It's just short.
They're at the railroad track.
It's sho, it's just short.
Huh?
Forester Road is short of the tracks.
Right.
Forester Road...
Does it run north and south?
It's across the street from the post office.
Forester Road is on the west side of the General Mail, oh, no, on the east side of the General Mail facility.
North.
North.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Is there two of them?
Well, on Forester runs...
If I, if I, if I may make a quick, quick comment?
So, it doesn't go that far?
Alderman?
Okay, when Mr. Height and I discussed McCain, and, and we both looked at it at separate times, you know, I guess our consensus was that between the privacy wall that's on McCain on the, on the south side, and the heavy vegetation that shields those residents, that there was little, if any, concern that we should have. And, you know, and I still hold, you know, it wouldn't, back toward North Hills, you know, you have some businesses, you know, so I still contend that those folks are shielded.
Actually, the existing lighting...
These were...
On the north side of McCain Boulevard would be brighter than any...
Mm-hmm.
Well, and I, you know, there's, we're still in discussion, you know, I, I know that at least at this point, if I was called on, I would support the legislation. I think that, you know, that it would add to the safety, and that's one of the things that at least would, would cause my vote to be where it is.
You're, you're supporting which legislation?
I'm supporting this amendment.
To, to limit it to Spring Hill Road? You know, you're going to cut out three shopping centers when you do that.
They're pretty active up there, yes, I know that.
And, and a new hotel. I'm opposed to it.
Okay.
Does it change?
Now, you understand why it's taken so long, but one thing that, we have to justify what we're doing here, and that's the one thing all along that, that Mr. Carter has told us, we can't just go down making rules because there's a shopping center here, there's one there. We've got to look at the safety, we look at the residential area. I mean, he's told us all the things that we have to look at, and if we just throw those out the door, we, we can't justify anything that we do, and other than we think this.
We're here to vote, that's what we're here to do.
Mayor, can I ask, can I ask Sean a question?
Sure. Sean?
Sean, what's the, is there, is there an existing sign overlay district on, on McCain west of North Hills Boulevard to the railroad tracks?
No, there's none on McCain anywhere.
Okay, that's what I thought, all right.
Wait a minute, that's, I don't, Sean, I'm sorry, I don't think that's...
There's not one, I know there's not one.
All right, we, I know we discussed an overlay district on that area, east of sixty-seven, one sixty-seven, being low mountain signs, anything else that went in. And for some reason, I assumed that we had passed that.
But you may remember Chick-fil-A came in asking for a waiver of that because the Planning Commission had made that requirement. So, any new construction recently on McCain, the Planning Commission has added that comment of monument signs only, and then Chick-fil-A had come in asking for a waiver of that, I think there was a compromise, wasn't there, to ten or twelve foot? So, that there was a compromise between the Planning Commission and City Council there. But there was no...
We're in dis, yeah, I'm sorry.
But that, we had not approved as, or there, there had never been a proposal for East McCain district, it's just been Planning Commission requirements.
We're in discussion on the motion to amend by reducing the size of the East McCain sign district, Alderman Ross?
And that's not to say that we can't come back and do a sign district overlay on McCain. I mean, I would be more than willing to work with Ward Four on that.
That's absolutely correct. Again, part of my suggestion in how we try to resolve these is very much by votes, but then assuming that the council, there are several different ways we can do it, and, and once we fix it as best we can by substantive amendments, you know, then I certainly would support however we want to do it by not making it effective until July first, and, and then not having any sign permits issued for electron, electronic changeable copy signs until, you know, this goes into effect. So, we're still on the amendment.
I have one more thing to say. I mean, that was the whole purpose of doing sign districts, so we could gradually wade into this, rather than just jump in headfirst, and we've got these signs for ten years that we cannot get rid of. So, I would much rather take it slowly in small bites and see, and then if we don't have any problem, then fine.
All we need to do is get five together, and, and, and we can make things happen at any, almost any day of the year. Further discussion? All right, the issue before us, I'm sorry.
Just so I'll understand again, one more time, you're talking about where again?
We're talking about reducing the size of the McCain sign district from ending at North, or beginning at North Hills to now beginning at Spring Hill, and then ending at Forester. So, we're reducing the size somewhat significantly, yes.
Our, our map doesn't show if there is, you know, where physical houses might be located, but it does show that all of that property is owned, C-three, C-five, I-one, and I-two.
All of it.
All of it.
Yeah, so, you know, that's the motion, and we're in discussion. Any further discussion on that? You know, I, I would ask the council to support it, I know if it gets to four votes, then that's what I intend to do. On the motion, Ms. Marshall?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
No.
Phillips?
No.
Height?
No.
Witcher?
No.
You got three. All right, it stays the same then. Any other amendments?
Trash it up.
Can, since, can I add an amendment, even though I don't have a hard copy? I think Alderman Witcher and I, when we had our discussion with Mr. Carter, we gave him a list of sign districts that we wanted in the ordinance, and I think I asked you this at either the next last council meeting, the last council meeting I was here, or the one before that, about the sign district on North Hills Boulevard that runs from McCain to Crestwood.
I've slept since then.
Okay. Well, Alderman Witcher will concur with me that we discussed a sign district on North Hills from McCain to Crestwood.
I'm not going to say that you didn't.
So, at this point, that would be my amendment, that we add a sign district into the legislation that is identified with boundaries that run on North Hills Boulevard from McCain to Crestwood.
Yep, then I'll second that.
Are you suggesting that we amend the McCain sign district?
Well, or should we have a separate sign district that's, since it's running on, actually, that's, that's, that's the North Hills sign district, as opposed to a McCain sign district.
Yeah, you would probably think so, but, you know, again, what rules apply to that?
Same rules as would apply to McCain.
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion to amend that would create a new sign district to have the same rules apply to that new sign district as apply to the East McCain district. Is that what we call it, East McCain?
McCain.
Excuse me, or just McCain?
McCain.
It's East McCain.
And, and that, the boundaries would be from, on North Hills from McCain to...
Crestwood.
Crestwood. That's your motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on that motion?
I'm confused.
Alderman Taylor?
Yeah, I'm with Debbie Ross, I'm confused. What are we doing?
All right, what we're doing, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, Alderman, that you are proposing that a new sign district with the same sign restrictions and options is, or in the McCain district be created, and that district be on North Hills with the boundaries, the southern boundary being McCain, the northern boundary being, northern boundary being Crestwood.
Which presently is all business.
It's all commercial now.
That, that being the banks, I guess on the, the west side, it would be the bank first.
Be a bank and Lakewood House.
North Hills Boulevard to Crestwood.
Crestwood.
Up to Crestwood.
Right, it's, what, about a three-block district, two-block district, very small. It's almost a, an offshoot of the McCain district, but in any event, Alderman Ross?
I'm just curious, why are you adding this? Is it so that you can have electronic changeable copy signs in the, on, in that area, basically the one block? That's what you're doing, to add those signs into there?
If they want them.
Okay.
All right, that's a motion, is there, we're in discussion on that motion. Any further discussion on that motion? Ms. Marshall?
Ross?
No.
White?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion, we're still available for amendments. Still available for amendments. Any council member? Uh, no other substantive amendments, Alderman Ross?
We have the one, I turned on, we have the one on the one hour, you know, if it changes the one hour or whatever, then it's not considered electronic copy, changeable copy sign. I do have something on this that Mr. Carter prepared for me, but I'm not sure if I'm perfectly happy with it, so...
Let me, let me just see what we can do on that, because I recognized a couple of the comments that were made in terms of the one hour and how that now could very well open up neighborhoods to being subjected to these signs, and I am very sensitive to that. I don't know, I hadn't had a chance to read your amendment, but I know that's the amendment that we discussed, and that's something that I support in terms of, you know, ensuring that, that those signs do not intrude in neighborhoods. What was your amendment, or at least what was your proposed amendment?
Well, one of the things that we, we had discussed is, pardon me, as, as we shorten the, the timeframe for categorization as of an electronic changeable copy sign down to one hour, there still may be a, the use of LED signs, that type of technology with that focused vivid light, which would be in proximity to residential properties on smaller streets, where the light would be far more intrusive. The concept was to amend our illegal lighting section. That, that was my approach to the amendment, that Mayor may not have made Alderman Ross happy. But, but it's, it's my best stab at it, and I'll talk to you about the, the two amendments that were there. One was to specifically address signs using LED lighting, is that signs illuminated by light emitting diodes or substantially similar technologies shall only be used on streets classified as arterials, meaning minor or principal arterials, or along interstate freeways, including access roads. It would lim, eliminate the use of, or the concerns about LED signs being used on our collector streets that connect neighborhoods to one another or in strictly residential, you know, local streets. Those type of signs wouldn't be permitted. Underneath that, there's a, a section M that says, "Signs illuminated by light emitting diodes or substantially similar technologies should not be used within or project light into any area or property that's been declared to be historic by the City Council of North Little Rock." And that just stands with our normal purpose of protecting historic properties, the feel of those properties, so that, that new light technology wouldn't be projected into those areas.
Well, I know that, that at one point, I remember some discussion about not having any within a certain number of feet of a residential, do I recall some discussion along those lines?
That's true, and that applies to electronic changeable copy signs, that they do have to maintain a distance. Now, and, also, just with, with the lighting rules, as we amended, I guess, I guess to back up just a bit, you know, the two main concerns about electronic changeable copy signs, one is these, the bright vivid image that is projected, you know, both to passing motorists and onto residential properties, and, and the effect that that has, you know, and our concern to, to reduce the size of those signs, and to reduce the brightness of those signs, so they're not quite as distracting, and also how it projects those, that same light onto residential properties and, and inhibits somebody's use and enjoyment of their home. The, the second part of it is not just the light itself being, you know, vivid and, and bright and detailed as those signs can be these days, but also the rate of change. The signs are capable of full motion video, just like television, you know, on the side of the road, and, which can be very distracting, and that's why we try to restrict the rate of change. We've kind of come to the point, I think, with the amendment to the one-hour change, is as far as rate of change, how fast the sign is changing. If it's not changing more than once an hour, is it really a changeable copy sign? Is it really affecting people by the rate of change of the copy sign? With the conclusion being, maybe it's not, maybe that's not as great of a concern, but the light is still a concern, the way that the light is projected. So, once we reduce the time down to one hour, there's still a concern some of these LED signs might be out there, and that's why we wanted to, to restrict the, the proximity to residential properties. And, and we segregated the way in which we were regulating them. One, to regulate by rate of change and, and size based on how fast they are changing, and the other way, to regulate specifically according to the light. Does that make sense? You understand where I was going with that? I know I've said a lot of words.
Well, I know, I know what I would like to see, you know, and, and that is to protect residential neighborhoods from the intensity of the light. One hour doesn't, you know, bother me nearly as much as the, the light itself, you know, shining in the backyards. The change with it once an hour, you know, that doesn't concern me, but certainly the intensity of the light, as it is close proximity, particularly as it relates to the face of the sign. Now, if the sign, you know, was facing a commercial street, then it may be a different, a different story, but in terms of a residential neighborhood that would be visible to the intensity of the light, that's at least my concern, and, and that's something that, in terms of an amendment, I would support. If, if we can fashion something along those lines that maybe comes closer to what Alderman Ross is interested in. Now, we don't have to do it tonight, again, if we go down the road we're talking about. Now, you know, I want to make sure that everybody knows that, you know, if we do go down the road, I'm suggesting, you know, that we all have shots to do things before this goes into effect between now and July first. Yes, ma'am?
The one thing that I had concern on this, and I haven't had a chance to talk to you about, is I don't really know what exactly are collector streets and what are the arterial streets. So, and one of my questions, and I think Sean Spencer here, here on Fairway, say from McCain to Summers, is that considered a collector street? Would they be allowed on that with this amendment?
I'd have to look that up.
Okay.
But we have it in, hopefully the book's in the store up here.
Oh, okay, and I guess that was one of my questions. I just wanted to see, because that, that's very residential, and so I wanted to make sure that that was, I don't know what's a collector street and what's an arterial street in the city. I wanted to look at that.
And, and, and again, assuming that we go down the road I'm suggesting, that we would have an opportunity to do that. Alderman Taylor?
Didn't we do something to the effect that, that we weren't going to allow them in R-one through R-six? Didn't we, didn't we do, did we talk about that?
I, I think we discussed it some and backed away from the zoning restrictions, in as much as we focused on trying to tailor the rules to the specific areas where we thought signs would, would be appropriate, and kind of to test drive the ordinance and see how it went, you know, to tiptoe into the regulation, see how it went, see, you know, we had concerns about problems, and see if those problems came to reality. And to, to address, answer your question more directly, I think I, I talked for about two minutes just a second ago, and, and still never answered your direct question. We have four different categories where electronic changeable signs would be authorized. It's within those categories that we dictate how many feet the sign must be from a residential property, and that's based on its relation to the size of the sign. The larger the sign is, the further away it has to be from residential property, but that's not in the illegal lighting section.
Well, let me ask this, if I, you know, these have got more than one nuance to it Well, let me ask this, if I, you know, these have got more than one nuance to it too, and that is, if we define electronic changeable copy sign as less than an, I mean, uh, greater, less than an hour, an hour or less, then there would be certain areas that these signs would be permissible that would not be within these districts?
Yes.
And that's my concern.
That there would be, there could be in one of these LED technology type signs that would be outside
Of these districts.
Of the changeable copy sign districts, because they'd just be treated like a regular sign.
Right.
Now, now the lighting is going to have to be controlled, because of course, this is a new technology, and it's very direct. And that's where, uh, the amendments have been fashioned, and I don't know if this me- fully meets the concerns of the council, but that's where we're, we're trying to shape some mechanism to where the council will be comfortable if those signs are regulated.
Well, my concern, and, and obviously, we're sort of in a committee of the whole without formally being declared, but my concern, you know, is if we define, which is the way the legislation goes, electronic changeable copy signs as not being defined by those who change an hour or greater, then my concern would be the intensity of the light as those signs relate to neighborhoods. And what you're saying is, is that nothing in this legislation would preclude the intensity of the light that are not defined, uh, as cha- electronic changeable copy signs, uh, being in close proximity to neighborhoods.
There's, there is no foot requirement right now for, uh, uh, non-electronic changeable copy signs that are illuminated from a residential property.
And while we may not be able to fashion amendment tonight, I would like to work with you, assuming again that this is passed in the way I hope it is, uh, to address that issue, uh, at, 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 at one of the council meetings between now and July 1st, again, making that assumption.
Right.
Because that, that is a concern of mine, and it's been voiced by several of those here tonight, and, uh, and I do not believe that it's been addressed in this legislation.
Mayor, if you will, please.
Sure.
Thank you. One of the continuing discussions, or part of the continuing discussion that we've had, has centered on protecting the residential areas. And, I guess wrongly, I have assumed that by establishing these districts, they would be the only places that these changeable copy signs could be.
That's what I was thinking.
Barring changeable copy signs from the rest of the city, except for those approved districts. And I, I think that, that was, that has been the premise that I've, I've been operating on.
You know, if you wanted to do that, that sounds fine to me, uh, but I don't believe that's the way the legislation reads.
Okay, wait, say that one more time.
Only the designated overlay changeable copy sign districts would be permitted to have changeable copy signs of any type. They would be prohibited anyplace else, other than those designated districts.
That's correct, but if you define the electronic changeable copy sign to be a sign that only changes faster than once per hour, and you could have a sign that, with the same LED type technology, that changes, let's say, once every two hours, and they could be installed just like a regular illuminated sign.
Well, again, what, what I think we're driving to, if we're looking at a consensus, is that, you know, and let me repeat what I think I heard Alderman Witcher say, is that I would just assume, and I would agree with that, that we prohibit electronic changeable copy signs everywhere except in designated, in the districts that we, we designate.
I thought that's what, excuse me for interrupting, but last week when I, or two weeks ago when I was listening, I thought that's what, excuse me for pointing finger, but I think your amendments confuse this issue.
Well, no, it didn't. It really didn't, because all my amendments did was, was change it from six to one hour.
Well, I know, but, but.
That means that if, that means, now, see, the problem is, Alderman, is that means that any elec- you know, the, the thing that was initially filed before I, you know, addressed my amendment, you know, said that any change, changeable copy sign that changed, you know, a six-hour time period. So, it still would permit them, but they would just be defined, I mean, it still would allow them, but it was ju- all I, all my amendments did is change it from six to one hour. So, it still wouldn't preclude having changeable copy signs, it just extends the, the, uh, the timeframe. So, you know, I'm, I'm back with what, what Mr. Carter did. My amendment did not do anything different other than change it from six to one hours. It still didn't prevent them from being in, in, in areas not designated as districts.
I was, I was under the same understanding that Alderman Witcher was, that unless there was a signed district in place that allowed them, they were banned.
Tell you what, I'll tell you what, wait a minute, everybody's nodding, so can we do something with this legislation that would, uh, do that, Mr. Carter, and, uh, let's see if we can get that amendment adopted?
Sure.
All right? Why don't we, since everybody seems to be nodding on that, let's just see if we can get that in place and clarify. That's fine with me.
So, but basically, all we're trying to say, if, if I'm reading the council correctly, if it is an LED technology sign, or are you saying?
I think.
If it, if it has the capability of being a changeable copy sign by, by reducing the time from one hour to fifteen seconds or to one second, then it's, it's a changeable copy sign?
We don't want any changeable copy signs anywhere but in the districts that we create.
So, any sign that's capable of changing copy?
I think that's what we're trying to say.
Electronically.
I thought that's what we've been saying all along.
Thought that's what we've been trying to do all along.
I don't, well, that.
Fifteen months.
All right, timeout. Let's see if we can put some language that ensures to everybody's comfort that that's what we are saying, and let's see if we can change this legislation. That's what the whole, that's what we've been trying to do, is start voting on things. And I'm glad that now we all nod, and that we don't want electronic, electronic changeable copy signs anywhere but in the districts that we create, under the rules that we designate.
Well, that's easy enough. And sec- right. In, in section one, where it defines what a changeable copy sign is, uh, the last phrase that was amended in should be taken out. And such content is changed more frequently than once during any six-hour interval. That's on page four.
All right, what are you doing now?
Definition of.
The definition of electronic changeable copy sign.
Right before section two.
The underlined section would be deleted.
Okay.
Under, uh, in that, uh.
Any such content is changed more frequently.
Where it says, "And such content is changed more frequently than once during any," now it says one hour interval.
I'll make that amendment.
All right, that's a motion. Is there a second?
What's the motion?
Well, the motion, as we.
To delete that sentence on page four.
Why don't you repeat what you were saying, Mr. City Attorney?
That's on page four of seventeen. You'll see in section one, the definition of sign changeable copy electronic.
All right.
There is a proposed amendment, "And such content is changed more frequently than once during any one-hour interval." You would remove that amended language, that underlying language.
And what you're saying, by removing that amended, that underlying language in that section, that we would then prohibit all electronic changeable copy signs everywhere in the city except in designated districts by rules that we establish? Okay? Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? On the motion, Ms. Marshall?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
But, we're trying to work hard for you. We may not get there, but we're sure trying. Uh, all right, the legislation is still available for amendment. Alderman White?
Well, I could have held this till next time, but, um, oh dear, I just, just moved it. Here we go. In section five, fourteen dot eighteen J, I'd like it to read, "The use of white light," and then it comprises more than, uh, right now it says twenty-five percent. I'd like to amend it to ten percent of the illuminated portion of the sign. From twenty-five percent to ten percent in the white.
The use of white, this is on page six of seventeen J, uh, and, and it currently reads twenty-five percent, "The use of white light on any sign illuminated by light emitting diodes or substantially similar technology that comprises more than twenty-five percent of the illuminated portion of the sign." And you're asking to change twenty-five percent to ten percent?
I really want it to be none, but I'll do ten percent.
All right. Is there, is there, is there a second to that?
A second.
Okay, now, we're on the motion to amend J from twenty-five to ten. We're in discussion.
I've.
Yes, my, okay. Question, Sean? How does this affect current signage?
Uh, it's only for new signs that we issue permit after July 1st.
So, any sign that's out there now, whether it be electronic changeable copy sign, would be affected by this change?
No, he says being grandfathered. Is that correct?
This only, this ordinance only affects anything after July, well, assuming you approve the July 1st date.
It's LED signs.
So, all existing signs would have to meet our current light standards, which, you know, we, we have that.
Is our, what is our current light standards in?
That, uh, it's. On page.
Seven.
Yes, page seven, the light emission standards. Where we go out and measure it before, you know, total bright and not on.
And how long's this been in place?
Uh, about a year now.
I thought, we'd already changed this once in the last year, so.
Uh, the motion, or in discussion on the motion to amend, uh, Alderman Taylor?
Can you, uh, give me, or give us some kind of idea that what would happen if we went from a twenty-five percent reduction down to ten on the white light?
The, it would definitely go, the brightness would go down, but there, there might be some issues with the logos and, you know, copyrights of a, you know, someone has their logo and it's got a white background. I don't, I'm not sure what the, um, talk to City Attorney on that.
I think it's a content neutral regulation, we could do it. I think we, if, there would be business owners though, that would be upset that they probably couldn't use their logos. But I think that it's legal. I think that that's a lawful amendment.
Okay, it, the brightness would definitely reduce, with white being the most glaring of the colors on a sign.
All right, motion that we reduce twenty-five to ten percent, uh, any further discussion on that motion? Ms. Marshall?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Baggett?
No.
Phillips?
No.
Height?
No.
And Witcher?
No.
Motion fails. Uh, any more amendments, uh, before we get to the implementation amendment, uh, that I hope we can, uh, discuss?
Can we go over the section that defines, uh, the boundaries of the signed districts?
We can do whatever you want to, Alderman. If you want to, however you want to do that, you're certainly welcome to.
I think there was a question, uh, I think, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but someone asked a question at the last council meeting, uh, about the, uh, boundaries of the Camp Robinson Pike Avenue, uh, signed district.
That was me.
Or the Pike Avenue especially.
Alderman Witcher just volunteered that that was him.
What's that? Yes is what?
Yes, I asked the question.
Okay. Did you, I, I was watching. Did you get your answer?
Uh, yes, unfortunately.
Okay, uh, we're, we're, we're in, we're in sort of a discussion. We want to try to get to, uh, if there's any more substantive amendments before we get to the implementation amendment that I discussed, the floor is open. Alderman, Baggett?
Mayor, I think what you brought up a while ago, we would really like to leave, uh, you know, where we're at on the signed district, but what you touched on about the, the feet and being intrusive into people's houses and things like that, that's where I think the real meat and the real deal is going to be about, you know, we start splitting up these districts and stuff, and I just said, amount of feet of, from a business to a residence where you can't have light shining into a resident, being intrusive into a resident.
One of the things that we did, Alderman, I think, by our recent amendment, is indicate that there are no electronic changeable copy signs of any type that can be anywhere except in these districts that we've created. So, you're right, if we do amend any district, then that question's there, but if we leave the districts the same, you know, then they can't be, uh, added except within the districts itself. Uh, and those districts, again, you know, can be amended between now and July 1st if we choose to adopt this approach. So, uh, you know, we, we helped address that just recently in terms of ensuring that no signs will be anywhere except the district. Alderman Ross, or, excuse me, are you finished?
Well, I mean, we do have a lot of residents, you know, from, from, in that area there, from Forty-Seventh to Remount, and I wouldn't have a problem with, you know, with a, a number of, amount of feet from, you know, light shining into somebody's residence.
Well, we, you know, we could do one of several things. We could either add that, as it applies to the Camp Robinson district, or we could split the district.
Those rules are in there.
They're in there.
Within the district, those rules are in there.
Okay.
They just weren't in there outside the district.
Right.
But they're in there.
Okay.
Inside the districts.
And so, outside the district, now we pretty well taking care of that problem.
All right, that's taken care of.
Okay, so we, apparently that's been addressed. I know the one discussion I wasn't involved with is all the, the tailored rules that apply to the different districts. Okay, Alderman Ross?
This is easy, I just have a question for Mr. Carter. On page four, where you've added non-commercial messages, I'm just curious, is there the reason? Was that something that needed added, or?
Yes, okay. That section, you're looking at section three, and there was a section that was.
Non-commercial messages?
New in total.
Okay.
It says, "Every sign that's authorized under this code to display a commercial message is also authorized to display a non-commercial message." And that has to do with valuation of speech.
Yeah, first amendment.
Right, the, the federal courts, uh, don't protect commercial speech as much as they protect non-commercial speech. So, if you're allowing a commercial message to be displayed on a sign.
So, they can put anything that they want on these signs?
You must allow a non-commercial message to be displayed on the sign.
And we cannot regulate them? Correct. Okay.
Any other questions, uh, before we get to what I hope is, uh, the last amendment?
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
Alderman Taylor? When you and Alderman Robinson were discussing signed districts, was Highway 161 from Pritchard to Rosemary discussed?
Pritchard to Rosemary.
Yeah, that's basically all commercial, uh, two blocks south of I-40 to roughly a block and a half north of I-40. It's all commercial.
I, I can't recall if it was discussed or not, Pritchard to Rosemary.
Highway 161 out there, you know. You got McDonald's, Burger King, you got, I don't know how many, big, uh, you got. Let me, let me again.
Let us just think about it, okay? And we can add it.
I just, I, I asked a question if it was considered.
We'll think about it.
Let me, let me, let me indicate again, if, if we go down the road, I hope we will, then we'll have plenty of time to think about it between now and July 1st. Uh, so unless there's anybody that, uh, feels like they've got a substantive amendment, except the implementation amendment, I'll call it, uh, the floor is open. Okay, Mr. Carter, would you help us, uh, do both the, the, uh, extension of, uh, the moratorium or no sign permits will be issued, uh, between, however you want to do that, and let's see if we can do that and contain it within the legislation?
And, and I have this written down, Lynn, I'll just bring it to you, okay? But to insert a new section, says that the moratorium on issuance of permits by the North Little Rock Department of Community Planning for electronic changeable copy signs established by Resolution Number 7453 and extended by ordinance numbers 8194, 8219, 8222, 82226, and 8256. It's hereby extended until and shall terminate on July 1st, 2010. Also, uh, in section eight, emergency to strike from the last sentence of that, uh, paragraph, from and after its passage in approval, and to insert the language on July 1st, 2010.
Go move.
Is there a second?
Okay.
We're in discussion. Any other council member want to, you know, and I think we've discussed the intent of that, so I don't know that we need to deal with it any longer unless anybody wants to say anything. Uh, Ms. Marshall, would you please call the roll?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height? And Witcher?
Yes, move for adoption as amended.
Okay, I'm applauding a little early. Okay, there's a motion made for adoption as amended, is there, then there is a second. On the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
What are we on? I got lost. What are we voting on?
We're adopting as amended, the entire legislation.
The entire legislation?
As amended.
No more amendments?
Well, no, there is been amendments. It won't go into effect until July 1st. So, we've got two council meetings plus about thirty-something days that, you know, forty days that anybody wants to deal with that. So, we're, you know, it still can be amended up until, you know, it, well, it can be amended at any time, uh, even after it goes into effect. So, amendments are always, uh, but until it actually goes into effect, there, I would suggest that we try to, uh, determine what, uh, amendments are appropriate, and make every effort to address those before the actual, uh, implementation of the legislation on July 1st, assuming this, again, is adopted. That's what the motion does. Uh, Ms. Marshall?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
We're not all happy. Uh, you know, I was on the, the short side of one or two votes. I know several others were, but, you know, but we made a decision, at least a decision that now puts something in place that if we want to try to change it, you know, subject to whatever our rules are, we can change it. Let me compliment the council for a long, hard effort. It may not be over yet, as no legislation is, is, is completely at, at an end. So with that, I think we all want to take a three-minute break. So we'll be in recess for three minutes. Thank you. Moving in a direction to sign out, uh, as soon as we can.
I like that.
That works pretty good.
R-1067, Mayor Hayes.
Yeah, let me see what it is now that I've had to call it.
It's a resolution.
1512 East.
All right, I think we can start moving down that road. Would you please call it, Ms. Marshall?
This is a resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1512 East Second Street in the city of North Flora Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Uh, can I get a motion?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, and I'd now like to call a public hearing for anyone who wants to speak to the council on 1512 East Second Street. This is a, a, a resolution authorizing condemnation. The listed owner is T A J Ali, A L I Saedi, S A E I D I. Uh, the microphones open?
Yeah, I'm, I'm the son, I'm his son, and my father is overseas, and, and he, his mother died, and he went overseas, and he had enough time to, so he gave me a power attorney to take care of this for him. And we had a tenant in there, she had like four dogs in there, we, we can't even go inside the house. Every time we go there, she got four dogs in there, we can't even go inside, we can't fix the house. She makes, she, she make a lot of damage in there. Now, I got, me and my husband, we fixed it, we almost done. How far you are from finishing it?
My name, my name's Stephen Opple, uh, I'm doing contract labor for him. I've been in, in, uh, working on this house since, uh, Thursday of last week. I have about, uh, probably about three or four more days on it to be completion, where somebody can move in and rent. Um, the, we are going to have an electrician go up in there and inspect, but the, the fire that was, that, that was in, um, it was an appliance by one of the tenants. This is a duplex, one side that he was referring to. Uh, I had a friend come in under me, uh, uh, to disinfect the place and clean the place, because you couldn't even walk in the place because of how bad it smelled, and, and that made him sick to where I couldn't.
That tenant, the. Okay, let's see what our code office says. We, we don't like to tear down houses when people want to try to do things, so let's just see what our code office says. Thank
Cedric Quentin did an inspection on this today, and let me tell you beforehand, what we're asking is to go ahead for a vote to condemn the property, and then he can enter into an agreement with us. This house has been this way since November. He says he's been working on it two days. You're gonna see from some pictures right here, uh, what he considers. He told me that he was 70% finished, and I thought it was his contractor, but it's just his contract labor. Cedric will go into, in some detail, and tell you what's not being done right, and we're concerned about the outcome of the house. And he'll talk about it real quick. And also, when he went and got the permit, he told planning that he was only gonna spend $1,500 to completely rehab the house. So that's where we also have an issue with Cedric's.
If you go ahead and go to the next picture, please. Next one, please. As you can see, uh, the owner put on the south side of roof and did not continue to put on the other side, uh, with the condition that it's in. I, you know, I have some concerns about, uh, that side of the roof leaking. Uh, he did put on the other side, but he did not put on that particular side. Next picture, please. As you can see, there are some electrical concerns, and he kind of indicated that he was gonna have an electrician go out there and check it, but I do have a lot of reservation regarding electrical system in the, in the place. Uh, next picture. Uh, that's a picture of the bathtub, one of the faucets is missing. I mean, you can kind of tell by the pictures, uh, nothing had been done in there that tubs around or anything in several years. Uh, next, please.
I'm sorry, if you want to.
Next picture, please. Next picture, please. That's a picture in the ceiling. I don't know for what obvious reason that they're, look like they're holding some, holding the ceiling up with that picture, but, uh, as you can see, it hadn't been very much work done in there in that kitchen. If he got three or four more days, then he must be gonna work there day and night. Next picture, please. Next picture. Next picture. Okay, that was side A, uh, that had the fire damage. This is side B, uh, that's fixing to come up now. Uh, and there again, hanging sheet rock before you do the electrical work, it's kind of backwards in my book. Uh, next picture. Next picture. Next picture, please. Next picture. Next picture. The next picture, please. And the next picture.
Cedric, can I?
Uh, would you remind us, uh, you know, 'cause I know we've done this before in terms of going ahead and condemning a property and then having an opportunity to enter into agreement, would you sort of refresh all of our memories about that approach?
Uh, one of the things that we do is, uh, meet at a regular scheduled time down at the code enforcement office with anyone who wants to try to rehabilitate a piece of property that's been condemned. Uh, and because, as you stated earlier, Mayor, it's, it's not the city's goal to tear down properties. When we can find somebody who wants to rehabilitate the property, that's what we want to do. But our rehabilitation agreements are pretty strict. Uh, they require, uh, posting of funds that are necessary to tear the property down in case, uh, the person, or the owner doesn't rehabilitate the property according to the timeline as agreed, and there are strict timelines for performance. We expect, you know, people rehabilitating, uh, uh, property to, to move expeditiously to get their inspections done and get the property cleared.
If we vote to condemn this property, how much time will the owner have to bring it up to code? What's, what's the normal time that you give them?
You know, I don't have the agreements in here thrown in front of me, but I, normally we give them a pretty good amount of time. I mean, I think it's four to six months.
Four to six months.
It gives them time to get it done, because, you know, there can be external repairs that need to be made, and it's probably better to go through, uh, a predictable process of, of repair rather than running around and throwing up sheet rock and, uh, uh, you know, and, uh, covering up a problem that may exist that's not otherwise gonna get fixed.
Well, this piece of property is in our ward, so what, uh, I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna vote to condemn with the understanding that they would have X amount of time to bring it up to code, be that four to six months, and then after that time, if it's not complete within the agreed-upon timeframe, then we just move forward. What about you, Mr. Taylor?
Let me, uh, let me just ask a question too. Now, the cash bond, I understand, or cash deposit, uh, how long would one have to come up with that? Uh, you know, I, I think some time ought to be given, but I don't think it ought to be elongated.
Under our resolution to condemn property, an owner gets 30 days, even under this resolution, before the city's gonna take any action against them. And from a practical perspective, we're not sitting there on the 31st day waiting to tear a structure down. There, there's a bidding process that goes out, there's allocations of funds.
Right, the council backs the council.
Right, that, that's necessary, uh, to, to make that happen, uh, logistically. But there's, there's a minimum of 30-day waiting period in there before the city's gonna take any action against the property.
Any other questions?
I didn't.
Uh, yes, ma'am?
Uh, this for, uh, Cedric, when were these pictures taken? Did these just taken?
They were taken today.
Oh, these pictures were taken today. Okay, when you were showing the, the sheet rock and ceiling, you said they haven't had an electrical inspection yet, but the sheet rock's already gone up?
Well, in some portions of the house, they had installed sheet rock.
Okay, and so this is one of my questions for Mr. Carter. So when they are doing, you know, rehab or whatever on this time, do they have a guideline where they have to have the electrical inspector? Because I'm worried about the electrical work in this house now, that, you know, because there was a fire, like you said, and is it safe?
Uh, anytime that we enter into a rehab agreement, it, we, uh, lay out for the, uh, the person rehabilitating the property, all the codes that have to be met, the inspections that have to be performed, the timeline that those inspections have to be met by.
Okay.
Any other, uh, thank you very much. Any other, uh, comments by anyone in the audience? You know, real quick.
The place, uh, as far as the electrical, the, the place, I got up in the attic today after, uh, he had come by, because I didn't know it was an issue. Uh, through, over half of it's yellow Ro Max, so it, it's been recently done. Uh, the other is the 1960's black, but I, I wiggled it around, make sure it wasn't brittle and stuff like that.
Now, let me, let me, excuse me for interrupting, but I think, you know, that we're gonna give you a chance to address some of that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, real quick.
The thing was on, it had been on, so we have, I come to the, uh, with the electric company, and we had a problem only when this fire happens, it could put on a fire, and then when the fire, it didn't do anything to me. So when, I guess, when I'm gonna get the deficient, he's gonna check it out, and he's gonna have any power.
And it wasn't. We appreciate it, uh, and, and, and not trying to predict anything, but we'll be, we're gonna, you'll have an opportunity under our normal procedure to address some of the deficiencies, uh, assuming that we go forward. So thank you all for your comments, and we'll be with you in just a second, take what next steps to take. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, Alderman Baggett?
Mr. Wadley, what? What is, I mean, you're the ex, you're the expert. I mean, what is your recommendation?
Just to go ahead and allow him to come into a contract. I think there needs to be some more oversight than what's going with.
And allow him, how much?
Well, let me, let me just, let me, let me answer that. Uh, that will be up to the, the job that's to be done, the recommendations of code, the input of the city attorney. You know, right now, it's a bit up in the air as to how that agreement is fashioned, and it usually is fashioned based on each particular piece of property, uh, in terms of what needs to be done and, and, and the work product to do that, to make that happen.
I got one question. You said it started back in November?
November's when they got their first notice, and, uh, then they were served a notice to city council in January, I believe.
Okay.
Any further discussions during the public hearing on the motion?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Um, Mr. City Attorney, you want to, is, do they come see you? Is that what the normal procedure?
We, we meet down at code's office at 8 o'clock, or what time is 8:30?
8:30 or 9:00.
From that fudge, I'd probably say 9:00. 9:00 o'clock at, at the code enforcement office.
Mr. Wadley, you want to talk to these two gentlemen and, and give them where and, and confirm the time and, uh.
I'll let Cedric talk.
That's fine. That's fine. That's fine. If y'all visit with him, we sure want you to do, uh, what, uh, we need to do to make that home habitable, and you still have the oppo, we'll have the opportunity to do it. Some steps you'll have to take, but the opportunity's there.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Next item?
R-1068, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is a resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1823 East 19th Street in the city of North Flora Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Uh, convene a public hearing. Anyone that cares to address the council on, uh, 1823 East 19th Street. Uh, the listed owners are Terry Lee and Judy C. Fletcher. Uh, the microphone's open. Single one, adjourn the public hearing, call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item?
R-1069, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1107 Curtis Sykes Street in the city of North Flora Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
You have a motion? Move for adoption.
Second.
Uh, public hearing, uh, for anyone who wants to address the council on 107 Curtis Sykes Street.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
as soon as Alderman Phillips asks his question.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Wadley the same question. When did y'all start on this one? Okay.
Okay, uh, let me go ahead and see if there's anyone here to talk on that. Public hearing, anyone here that would care to address the